Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. It's 6:13. We're meeting in the Town Hall Lower Theater this evening. And there's a Zoom link for those joining that way. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
I have none.
We need to approve the minutes. November 17th, 2020 meeting.
Motion approved.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes in November 17th, 2020 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
Aye.
Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? You'll get three minutes per person. I can't tell, Shannon, can you?
I don't see anybody in the Zoom meeting.
Good time, a couple of items just for update. We've made some changes at the recycling center. And as you can imagine, anytime you make some changes, there are some people that are not happy, some people that are happy. A couple of things, just so that you're aware, we did change the locks, so I have redistributed keys. So there's a limited number of keys that have been distributed to the appropriate personnel, highway, fire, myself, and full-time employees. So there is the old keys, for whatever reason, had been distributed on a much greater basis, so we wanted to cut down our, I think, distribution. So we have a much more limited distribution now. We put the new platforms in. I don't know if you had a chance to go down there recently. I think it's been helpful for folks that platforms on either side now, the compacters, so people can step up and not have to reach over their shoulders. You know, folks that are a little bit smaller, sometimes are having difficulty getting things into the compacters. Larry White is now down there full-time. He's been working with some of our customers, especially as it relates to the scale. And just so that the Select Board is aware, some of our customers are not real happy. I guess they have been receiving a beneficial, I guess, when they do come in, they're not always weighed, and so therefore there are times, I think, when they were disposing of items, and much to their benefit, much, you know, not to our benefit. So we've been more aggressive in telling folks, especially with large loads, you've got to come over the scales. Some people have been upset about that, some people have complained to me, when I've been there, as well as to Larry and others, that they're going to come and complain to the board. So as you're all aware, if somebody does come to complain, that's been one of the things that has been tightened up in terms of how we're operating the area there. We've cleaned out more of the material from inside of the building. One of the things that we're going to look at and talk about as we go forward is cardboard and the ability, possibly, to look at getting a cardboard baler. And if there is enough market, and we're doing some research now to see where the prices are with cardboard and to see if it's worth the investment, to separate that out from the single stream, bail it, keep it dry inside the building, and then be able to sell that material potentially, as opposed to, right now, it's just part of our single-streamed distribution. Then the last thing that I'll just highlight on our end is we're looking at also potential of adding some lights to the facility. It is dark in spots and in corners, and you know, this time of the year, it can be dark fairly early and dark at times. So we're going to look at the potential of doing that. But we're working on, I think, transitioning, as we talked about, in a two-year cycle. We want to get the, at least the facility, to start breaking even. We don't think that's unrealistic. And then look at a second year, possibly going to an enterprise fund and talking about making it its own entity off the general fund and self-supporting. So I think we can get there. It's a little bit painful, obviously, every time you transition, but so far, I think it's been, we're moving in a positive direction on that recycling center. Anybody have any questions, any comments? Yes.
I think the cardboard thing is a good thing to explore. Charleston has a very beneficial arrangement, reference cardboard, so maybe work some car and get some information with that.
Yep.
Also, as far as going over scales, just from my brief time volunteering down there, I know Peter's spent an extensive amount of time, but, you know, it makes a difference when we, as a town, are paying the freight, and people come in and you've got a mattress that's dry and throw it in. Difference in weight, you come in with one that's soaking wet and been out in front of your door for two weeks. And who picks up the difference on that? The taxpayer. So in town, I think it's a great idea, more of a scale, to use them and utilize them as a short change in our, I'm glad to see that.
I will say sadly, I was down there most, not most of the, pretty much most of it. And there was only one unsatisfied customer that didn't want to go across the scale. The rest of them kind of gave you a sour look, but they bit the bullet. So it was a good move. I know in the past, we discussed that at one point with the bin manager of the facility, and they're kind of just laid in limbo there for a while, nothing ever got done. So I'm glad to see that's done, because I've seen stuff fall out of the bags in the rubbish dumpster that shouldn't be in there, and it was construction materials, so I'm glad to see they're getting weighed. So that should help our, you can always tell, you can tell it, so it's starting to help our, the plus end anyway, the revenue end. So I can see there's a little jump in the revenue there from where we should be, so.
Well, we're going to track that as well, obviously. And one of the things I'll come back to you and we'll talk about is our C and D disposal costs. It's ridiculously low.
Yeah.
I need to do some research and give you some, just some generic pricing for some of our neighbors, and then I think we can all agree that we probably need to make some move on that number as well. I think we've been subsidizing a lot of that as well with folks. And I think that, again, if our goal is to move this towards a, you know, a different type of arrangement and off the taxpayer general fund, then I think that's something we're going to have to pursue as well. So I'll be bringing that back to you as well as you move forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else?
Just a little bit of an update, obviously, on COVID. You know, as we're returning back from the holidays, and everybody's had different levels of impact, depending upon your workplace, or your family, or what's going on individually with schools or other types of public entities. At this point, we've maintained that the building is open to the public. We've asked and have continued to ask the public to comply with mask mandates and to be, you know, respectful when they come into the building of trying to maintain social distancing. Our traffic in the building is low enough at this point that I think we're going to maintain that posture unless we're given a governor's order where we have to close the building under some sort of statewide mandate. At this point, I don't know if we're going to get one of those. It really is kind of a week-by-week scenario. So as of now, we're open to the public, we're open for business, we're hoping to maintain ourselves, you know, through the short term that way. But we'll certainly let you know week by week, and if we do get a mandate from the state, obviously, we'll have to comply, and that'll change our hours and our operations. So we'll let you know as that progresses.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to the agenda, item number one, development, Mr. Gary Fox.
Thanks.
You guys got all your paperwork?
Yep. So I'm just going to pass around these pictures while I talk. They're pictures of the machine parts that are in the gravel mill. Take a gander and pass it on. So what we're looking at, in 2003, the town had to do an emergency removal action of this paper machine from the TLR buildings due to friable asbestos. And at the time, the Development Office and the Historic Preservation Commission saved out this paper machine in the gravel pit. And what we're looking for is to request that the town donate the paper machine to SVG as part of the grants and redevelopment for the Connecticut River Heritage Center. And I don't know, is David Deacon on the Zoom?
Is.
Yeah, so David did a thesis on the paper mills of Bellas Falls, and if folks had an opportunity to read any of the history and have questions for him, or if he wants to make any statement, I would ask for that piece at this time.
Go ahead, sir. Are you there, David?
I've got pulled into this fairly quickly over the last couple of weeks, but I have thought that Bellas Falls would really benefit from having some sort of memorial to the paper industry. And the fact that we have one of these machines, or at least a good, many parts of the machine, I think is really significant, and I think it should be preserved somehow. That's basically where I'm coming from. I wrote a few pages, basically spelling out some of the history of that area, and I'm willing, I'm eager to take questions. I was able to see the pieces of the machine over Thanksgiving, when I visited my mother. And so I had a sense of what remains of the machine. And there's some interesting, there's some interesting pieces. The big drying cylinders that you've probably seen in the photographs, they're the most visually striking part of the machine, I think. But then there's a lot of interesting sort of pieces of it. It's not, it's not the entire machine, unfortunately. Yes?
I have a question. My name is Annette Folling, and I've met you, David.
Oh.
Thank you so much for your amazing history. I learned so much from you, and scuba diving and continuing to find these parts underwater is just.
We can't hear without a microphone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to share this one.
Hi, my name is Annette, and I had, is this on? Okay. I had the opportunity to meet David Deacon, and I've learned so much from him. I scuba dive, and I've been finding a lot of very historic things in our area, which is just unbelievable. The first of this, the first of that, and we have so much history in our community. I'm very interested in having this piece preserved. I think I have found other parts similar underwater, and realizing when I'm down there scuba diving, all the people that are coming from many towns and communities saying, this is the most historic place ever. People come from long way, Boston, Connecticut, even further than that. And so when I'm down there diving, they're always asking me if I find what I see and everything, and I really think this is a real benefit to our community to have this historic walk. I did 167 dives down there this year, and I just really feel that by giving this to SVG, who's a nonprofit organization, that we'd be eligible for our community for grants to preserve it and have it part of the park, where if the town just holds on to it and it sits in the paper mill and rots away, and David identified this, and I just was so amazed. So David, I think, would you, would you say that this is one of the earliest pieces ever made by international, I mean, that was used at International Paper? Is that?
Well, it's, it's hard to tell. We think that the drying cylinders, they're dated, and so we think they date to 1898, which is the year that International Paper was founded. The Bellas Falls mills were some of the first mills of the International Paper Company. The people who organized it, one was active in Bellas Falls, and the other was active in Rumford, Maine. And so the machine itself, I think, is probably, parts of it are probably from the 1880s and 1890s. It is a machine that was used at the peak of paper production in Bellas Falls. And the thing that strikes me about the manufacture of paper here is that Bellas Falls didn't only have paper mills. It was, at one time, the largest producer of newsprint in the country. And so the significance of this, and also the significance of it as one of the founding mills of the International Paper Company, to me, this is sort of an untapped resource. That machine, of course, stayed in operation for a very long time. Perhaps if it was made, maybe in the 1890s, at least, what, it was still in operation in the 1980s with TLR. So it's, there's a lot of history right there in that, in that one machine. And the way we, the way it could be interpreted, I think, would add a lot to people coming to the town wanting to learn more about the history.
Thank you, Dave. I'm really excited about it, actually. Thank you.
Me too.
How do you plan to move it? Says you're going to move it.
I'll tell you what, if you give it to SVG, I'll personally help.
It says, it says that you're going to move it. My question was how.
So, so next week, if the, if the Select Board agrees to this plan, next week, someone that Annette works with who moves large brewery tanks is going to bring the truck up to the gravel mill. Andy has a machine up there that can load the equipment onto the truck pretty quickly and bring it down to the Wyman Flint Mill.
This man I asked, his great-grandfather was Mr. Emerson, and there's a lot of history, and his family was involved many years ago, working for TLR. So when I told him what it was, he offered to do it at a very reasonable cost. So because I really care so much about the community, I love the walkway, I'm going to cover the cost for him, and I was hoping maybe the town could help him with the equipment, loading it on to his equipment on the trailer. And then when it gets down to the location, maybe helping unload it. He has a lot of experience, he has all the straps, and I'm really hoping that that can happen. I've just been, I've really taken an interest to this very much with all the diving and things I've been finding. It's really good for the town. I see people all the time down there asking me about it.
This is a little further point of history behind this. Back when this was first moved into the pit, it was never divulged where this equipment was going, because they were afraid it was going to be stolen. And at that point, as Gary mentioned, there's asbestos, friable asbestos down there, and evidently ended up demolishing the building that this machine was in. So that's why they moved it out of there. And Ramp, at that point, decided to apply for a grant so we could have some sort of a display, and the grant never came through. So that's why they moved it up to, which is now known, everybody knows now, it's at the pit, and it stayed there for several years before we finally decided to do something with it. I'm glad to see it's going to do something besides sit there and rust.
Yes, exactly.
Any other discussion? And a motion? Or discussion? Motion's written.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, I'm not sure I want to say donate, the International Paper Company paper machine that was removed from the TLR mill complex in 2003 to Sustainable Valley Group for the purpose of historic preservation.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do you move? How you want to word it? Move the International Paper Company paper machine?
Well, find out what, what the intent is here. It says, we donate to Sustainable Valley Group, and if you read the whole paperwork that Gary's so nicely provided here, what happens if none of this plan comes to fruition? Then what happens to the machine? SVG then owns it, or if we donate it to them, they own it. They could turn around and sell it to somebody else, and the town would then be, you know, at the disadvantage. So I'm just wondering, you've got a five-year lease here in back here, and I've got some questions on that too, but that's for discussion later, the next section you got here. So I guess I would like to know what, what happens in the next five years. I mean, this, this process of the TLR mill has gone on for, I'll probably, I'm going to guess, anywhere from 10 years, as long as I've been on this board, to maybe 15 years, and nothing's really developed down there. So it just makes me a little hesitant to just donate the, the equipment to SVG. So if you got, you can kind of quell my anxiety, if I want to call it that.
Sure. So there's a few different levels of interpretive exhibits that are possible. So the lowest possible use, say that the contamination at TLR is, is too much, and the dilapidation of the building is too far along to save those, and same with Wyman Flint, and there cannot be a Heritage Center there for the display. The paper machine could easily be set up in a, you know, 20-foot by 10-foot concrete pad as a display on the riverfront. So the trail in the riverfront, it's actually not a trail, it's formally a historic interpretive park. And, and part of the point of that is to have interpretive displays on it. So the Griss Mill, TLR, Wyman Flint, those would all be, those are all part of the interpretive park. If the museum-type spaces cannot be developed indoors, the lowest-end use would be that the machine is set up on the trail outside as an exhibit. Highest-end use would be that either in the Wyman Flint or the TLR buildings, part of it is exhibit space, part of it is incubator business space. There's been different ideas for the exhibits. The first time that, oh, two years ago, when Susan Smaller wrote about the International Paper Buildings, when the Select Board approved a stabilization grant to the block grant program, International Paper reached out and said they, they don't invest in communities where they don't have active mills, but they would be happy to participate in setting up an exhibit to help sponsor that. And so let's see. So one of the ideas was to have a mural of the full paper machine. So the packet of pictures I sent around, the top picture was the, the full machine in operation in the Wyman Flint Building, the same type of machine, not the one from TLR, but the same Fournier paper machine. So, so one possible setup, and just as an example, as the exhibit is developed, would be a mural of the full-size machine on the wall, and then the paper machine, the parts in the places that are appropriate for them would be coming out of the wall, and it would be part of a Heritage Center, which has destination exhibit-type spaces as well as incubator business spaces, as described in the Connecticut River Heritage Plan and the Michael Singer Study, which are two great development projects that were put together by professionals at the expense of the town in 2002 and 2007, that these projects are working towards, in that the trail that we have down there now, the Historic Interpretive Park, was in those reports, is the first part of that development. So anyway, the short answer to worst-case scenario is that it is an exhibit on the trail outside if the, if the buildings cannot be redeveloped.
Also, you mentioning that, Peter, back during the trustees, when Kay Hennessy was village president, and I believe Stuart Reed was on the board, that, I think, is the timeframe, about 2001 or '02, when that machine, I believe, came out of there. And at the time, I know Stuart, who probably may have some more information about it, advocated about putting that machine into a plastic or a glass vestibule. The estimated costs at that time were around $100,000, if I remember correctly. And of course, the village didn't have the way, the means to do that. But I mean, there may be some information that Stuart has, I'm sure.
Yeah, the other concern that, if you're reading Deacon's report, is that that whole mill area was destroyed during the flood, and it is in the low-water area there. God forbid, we don't get another 27 flood, but, you know, just curious of the damage that could be done if, if it's not put in a protected area, that's the only.
Sure. So that whole area is, has a much different look to it today with the blasting from the tail races at the time to these days when the hydro plant and the canal is focused. And if you look at the floodplain maps, the part of the interpretive trail that is in the floodplain is beyond the buildings, beyond the cleared field, and to the areas where the, the plantings, where there's still contamination under a cap, and it's, it's thick plantings to discourage people from being able to walk around there. That's where the floodplain is. So where the Wyman Flint and TLR is, it's kind of protected from the floodplain since that topography changed with the power plant.
I think the valid concern is, in the event this was not to come to fruition, and we didn't have possession of that machine anymore, what would happen to it? So I think that, that is one of my concerns here, Peter, and I'd hate to lose that asset. We'll have to be into a, so to speak, a bump in the road with whoever may be in possession of it at the time.
I would like to say it's in the gravel pit, just falling apart. So I think that it'd be a really great thing, and maybe SVG, I just have a strong interest in the whole community in this preservation, so whether it's SVG, the Historical Society, whoever it is, I really have a personal interest that, that is so good for the community, and I really feel that maybe you could come up, the town could come up with something, maybe, that says, okay, if SVG, I don't know, wasn't in existence anymore, then it would probably go to the Historical Society, but the park is already a place, it's owned by the Historical Society, and those two great big stones, health stones that I found that are down there, I found those diving, and when they were building the trail, they were actually able to get them out of the water and put them there, and people always ask me about them. People are really, really, they should be seen and preserved for people. And when they are right now, they're being protected there probably, because nobody could find them, but if they did, they wouldn't be protected, that's for sure. There's a lot of pieces that could come up, you know, that are not that heavy. And my personal, as a taxpayer, I would love to see those taken out of there, and now history preserved, and have them along that walkway, and have them part of that park.
I think we all agree with, with having it on display, and we have to close the gravel pit. That's, we're all in agreement there. I think the concern, including myself, is that it's written to donate it to the SVG group. That's, that's what we're talking about, so.
So I guess.
And it's on, it's being moved. The second part of this, the next item, is about SVG leasing that property, so we haven't even got to that part yet. But the, it's written as donating it, and I think the strong history that we've all talked about here, that's an important piece to this, this community, and donate it to someone, I think. I don't, I don't like the way that's worded.
Yeah, that's what I said, I had a problem with the word donate. I don't have a problem with the intent, it's, get me wrong. In fact, I think it was a couple of months ago, I brought this up, about taking that mill, the machinery out of that pit, and I think I remember bringing it up at BFADC and saying it was too bad we couldn't have plunked it up on the Robson Paper Company area, but that would have deleted, you know, would have taken away from that project. So we really couldn't have, couldn't have done that. But if we could figure out some way to change this wording to, just to say that it, if, if the proposal to rehabilitate that area doesn't come to fruition, and it, then it will be, you know, revert to a. and it, then it will be, you know, revert to a historical exhibit, rather than just, it kind of, it's a little vague the way it's written here.
So I think the, the important, oh, sorry, can I?
I was just going to check with Susan Hammond, see if she, she hasn't said anything. See if she has anything she wants to add right now, and then we'll hear from you again, Gary. You have anything, Susan?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, sorry. I, I think having it back in that spot would be, would be great. I don't know if there's some way you can put in conditions that, you know, it would be donated to SVG once the plans are in fruition. I don't know if that would make it, make more sense. I actually don't have a problem donating it to them, but I think putting some kind of, maybe some conditions might be helpful.
Or maybe some verbiage, Mr. Chairman, if it would, in the event it would, didn't come to fruition, that the machine would revert back to the town of Rockingham.
Well, maybe as opposed to a donation, you know, governments can only do certain things, right? We dispose of surplus property, we buy property, we'll see, we sell property. We, we can do a, if you'd like, we can do a transfer, in, in, in the idea being that the transfer is contingent upon the successful completion of the lease and the establishment of, of some historical display, or whatever other wording you want to use for that. If not, we have not given up ownership of the asset, it just reverts back to the property of the, of the town.
Right. The, the other item I'm hearing is.
It's a transfer in kind, basically.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, once we, we're out of that pit, and it goes back to whatever state it will be in, I think the concern is, regardless of who's, who has possession of the machine, is where could we put it, where could it be in a safe location, where stuff won't disappear?
Can fill in a little bit on that, yeah, we've talked.
Yeah, so, so a few things. One, I don't think there's any attachment to SVG for, for owning the machine. It has a lot of value to us for its cultural heritage. In terms of sale, like scrap metal's not getting all that much these days. It's, it, it, I would be concerned about leaving it in the open where it could be stolen. But as terms of it being sold, it doesn't come near the, the value that it has to us for the cultural heritage. And, but the, the reason it's important for, for the ownership is for access to grants, development of exhibits. The, the town could, the town could, could own it and do the same thing. But in the interest of the town not being, you know, a, a developer landowner, they have BFADC and SVG, a local development corps, that can access grants, clean up properties without the town taking on that liability. Donations can be restricted. You can make a restricted donation, and you'd have, have to ask attorney. I know from working with a lot of nonprofits, when they have a restricted donation on the books, they cannot legally use that for something else. So certainly you could have conditions, restricted donation, whatever you needed to do to feel comfortable. I'm, I'm sure, you know, Dave Bont is not here, but he did, I'm sure he would feel fine with whatever the town came up with for conditions. And there's a fenced area next to the Wyman Flint that's lockable. And initially, everything will be put behind that fence and be protected, so that it, it can't walk away. And during the, the period of development, it would be easy to set the machine up, to set a, a concrete pad there and have it basically put back together, just bolted together and be in its position, and maybe take up 10 feet by 20 feet there, and be in that, in area at the triangle between Wyman Flint and Griss Mill. So all those concerns are just important to SVG, the Historical Society, the community. Same concerns that the Select Board has. And I think everyone wants to do whatever works to protect, to protect that historic asset for, for the historic preservation, the, the exhibit, the, the cultural heritage. So however the wording has to be, maybe it makes sense to have the town attorney write language for it. But I think it is important that, for the development, that there is, during the development period, whether, you know, reverts to the town if there is no development, but during that development period, that there is ownership of it for securing the grants to put together the exhibit at that site. I don't know if that helps at all. SVG would, yes, right.
Okay, then, another thought would be, if that were, is the case, would S G V have a, I don't know, a gentleman's agreement, or some type of agreement, in the event whatever didn't work out, they would donate it back to the town of Rockingham?
Stephen, if you're concerned about that we're not seeing progress, or you're concerned that we're not going to be able to, you know, complete the transaction and, and create the historical exhibit, I think what we could do is add language that if the town asked, and we would have a formal ask, right, in writing, and SVG would have to respond. And if, you know, they could not respond within 30 days, the, the, the town would, would take full possession of the asset. So you wouldn't give up anything more than a 30-day requirement to ask, you know. So let's say two years from now, you guys are dissatisfied, and we haven't been able to make progress, and you say, listen, send a notice, we'd like to, you know, get this back in our possession, and we have some ideas of where we want to move it, or how we want to store it, or maintain it. And we would do that with a 30-day notice, and then it would be back to our possession to do with it what we will. So I, you know, I, I have faith that we won't have to do that, but that's a failsafe, if you'd like to incorporate that, which maybe will satisfy those concerns.
What about if we throw in another sentence here that says the equipment shall be installed for a historical exhibit? Right at the end there, after, after your historic preservation.
Also, right, accomplishes the same goal.
Yeah, and it's just one sentence, but at least it's.
Good idea.
That it will be an exhibit, one form or another, and, you know, because then, then the challenge becomes later on, are you going to want to put a kiosk or some sort of a plaque down there that describes what the machine is? People aren't going to know, they're just going to see a bunch of machines there, and they're not even going to know what it is. So that's a, that's a cost that's going to be, I'm sure, probably be covered by a grant, or included in the grant application, the cost thereof. So the people wandering down there, looking at the millstones can, you know, I mean, those can be included in the, in the same thing. So just, just thinking down the road here, and that's another cost that, somewhere that we ought to be thinking about now, rather than five years down the road, when, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here.
No, an exhibit would have to have an interpretive plaque to describe what it is. And I think the, the Historical Society is putting up kiosks with language describing the stuff there. They, it's in process and the funds are there, that piece just hasn't been up yet, but I think it will be this coming summer. The kiosk has been procured, they're working on the language. So it is a historic interpretive park, which does include interpretive language describing the exhibits and the history. You, you're right, absolutely. And that sentence would make it a restricted donation as well.
That's, that's what I was just thinking, that way there. It's not going to go back up to the pit or trying to find someplace else to hide it, and it's going to be down there where the rest of the exhibit area is, and it just solves the situation, I think.
As well as what Scott said, is a failsafe, too.
Yeah.
I mean, might as well have everything in there that you can to protect the town's interest.
You want to amend it?
Yeah, I'll amend it with that sentence, the, 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 after the end of historic preservation, the motion should then read, move to donate the International Paper Company paper machine that was removed from T L R mill complex in 2003 to the Sustainable Valley Group, Inc., for the purposes of historic preservation. The equipment shall be installed for a historical exhibit. That way it gives you the ownership of it, to go apply for a grant.
Not me, Sustainable Valley Group.
Need a second on the amendment.
Yeah, I'll accept that, Gary.
So the amended motion, you hear that, everyone? Any further discussion? All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, guys, very much. Good luck putting that thing on your explorer.
Did that also include the lease terms as well? I just want to make sure you tell them, or are we doing that separate?
We haven't got to that.
Okay, thank you.
So next item.
Item two.
Is a T L R, is a T L R lease proposal. Basically, when the, the town took ownership in the late 1990s, and started doing the environmental work, of course, everything stopped because of the friable asbestos, and they had that million-dollar emergency removal action. And there is, there's a level of contamination that's been identified at the T L R buildings, and the Department of Environmental Conservation with Vermont requires that it be cleaned up. So one, one way or another, once contamination is identified, it, by law, it has to be remediated. So the, the Historical Society was working on that in 2016, and was making progress, and they had to, they had to stop that work. They just, they really need to focus on the Griss Mill, their mission. They formed around saving the Adams Griss Mill, when the owners walked away from that working mill in 1965. And it's starting to deteriorate. There's about a $300,000, $350,000 not to get that building into shape. And that can be a working Griss Mill museum. It's a, it's a, it's also a great asset, part of the Historic Riverfront Park. So they've asked SVG to help with this part of subdivisioning off the, the Wyman Flint building, which is, the land butts up against the, the T L R property. And SVG would be able to work with the Windham Regional Commission and continue the work that the Historical Society started with the Brownfields Assessment, and then, and then the cleanup. And basically, there's a, there's a timeline in the lease that, that talks about the, the process that SVG and the Historical Society are going through in December and January, and the, the lease with the town, and what SVG will do to move the environmental work forward towards that cleanup. And I guess the, the worst-case scenario is that the EPA will not support, will not support a cleanup. If the EPA does support an application to their program, at that point, SVG would look to exercise the option and purchase the building. So in order to apply for the EPA grants to do the cleanup, there has to be ownership with it. So, so the lease is same thing as it there was before. It's, it's a dollar a year, it's exercise an option for a dollar if the EPA grants can be secured to, to clean it up. And then, as that work progresses, there will be a determination along the way if the buildings can be saved and renovated into part of the Connecticut River Heritage Center, along with parts of the Wyman Flint building that can be saved, or whether it has to be demolished, and we would want to stabilize the canal wall, which is another piece of history, the first commissioned canal in the country. That original wall runs through the basement of one of the T L R buildings, still has original eye bolts on the wall from when there were locks. And that's the, that's the basic nut of the proposal. I don't know if you have specific questions or concerns, or?
I just had a quick one. It was a couple of years ago, you came about the roof, it was almost like an emergency roof. You were trying to get a grant, whatever happened to that?
Yeah, so there's, there's three problems with the buildings that are of more immediate concern, that are.
The first one was like, critical to catch up and clear.
Yeah, so the, the, the three critical items, one is that original canal wall, the bottom is sliding out into the basement. So part of the grant was to secure that. And we had, and, not we, the Historical Society and Sustainable Valley Group had engineering studies done, which identified how to stabilize those while they were waiting to, for planning work to develop. Another one was closing up a roof area, and there's, the, the critical piece of that is that there's an I-beam that's not well-supported, that has pressure on it, that needs to be stabilized. What the Vermont Community Development Program said was that the whole project needed to be further along before, well, two things. One, that the whole project needed to be further along before they would put a couple of hundred thousand dollars into it. And the other one is that they wanted to see some town support. So they said, you know, why isn't the, if the, the town owns these buildings and wants to save them, and it's $300,000, why aren't they putting in $100,000 and asking us for $200,000? So, so they saw a lack of commitment. We used, in, in 2015, the Development Director brought a, a article warning to town meeting for $100,000 to begin tearing down the T L R buildings, and the town meeting voted it down. And we used that example to show town support for stabilizing the buildings and renovating it. And they said, that's not town support, that's, that's town support for not demolishing. It's not town support for saving them or rehabilitating them. So, and they also, they said afterwards, they, they, they said, you know, in this round, here's an example, a similar project. It was, it was on the fourth, the fourth time they came to us for money when we donated it. This is a tough program, it's very competitive, and they gave us a couple of other hints on what to do. And one of them is a grant that the town is applying for, this January, called the Better Connections Grant. And right now, the problem with that waterfront is, we're trying to develop it as a destination. So we have a trail that people love to go to, and they go, and, and a lot of people already come. We want to add this historical, the cultural heritage niche of the Connecticut River Heritage Center, and have even more people there.
Yeah, I, I, I follow your plan and all that, Gary. I was just specific, I just remembered the slate, and, and it had to be fixed.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be quick, two more sentences. So, so that one access, it's steep in front of the train tunnel around a blind curve, is a problem. And the Better Connections Grant will find alternative vehicular access behind the post office in Obashan, so that there's a safer and secondary pedestrian and vehicular access. So that was another reason they didn't support the project that will be solved with, over the next year, with that process.
You have a question?
No, I know, we've, we've heard that before, in, in the process of the Historical Society. And that, and access to that area has always been a problem, anyway.
Yes.
The way it's designed now, which is probably why the townspeople refuse to, or kind of hesitant about putting funds aside to do something with those buildings when there's really not a lot of access, and, and they, there's no firm commitment as to what is going to be put in down there. And if so, how are they going to access the area with the way it's set up?
Exactly.
So it has a lot of challenges down there, let's put it that way.
Opportunities.
But do you need a motion on the floor to continue this discussion? Because I got some questions in the lease.
There's a motion there.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Select Board approves the lease of the T L R complex to the Sustainable Valley Group to continue with the environmental assessment and cleanup for the purposes of redevelopment.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the lease of the T L R building, complex, SVG. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Gary, in your lease agreement, a lot of. a lot of verbiage that refers to buyer seller, lease, lessy, et cetera, et cetera. But on number seven, there's no reference to a certificate of insurance for the, showing the town, you know, to the, so that we know that you guys are. I know it does say that in the, in the, on the agenda, you're going to take care of liability insurance, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't state that. I'm not sure if it even has to be. I, I guess we'd have to refer that over.
It probably shouldn't be agreement.
Isn't it stated somewhere else?
It, it is, it's in the agreement, there's one million.
On their projected timetable, but it does not, not specifically noted in the lease itself.
So I, I think that the lease includes Exhibit A. The, the lease refers to Exhibit A and says it's inclusive as part of the agreement. And, and that talks about the liability insurance of one million dollars per claim, two million aggregate. So, so it is a requirement in the agreement. If you, if you'd like it written differently in the lease, that, I mean, that, that's fine. I'm sure that.
I think it should be incorporated in the lease agreement because that's part of the agreement.
Yes.
It is incorporated in the lease agreement.
Specifically how? Because I'm not.
He just.
Well, I understand, he just said is A.
The signature page on the back of the signature page is Exhibit A. And then it does show, and maybe it's a little confusing because it does have a timeline. But as part of that, under the December twenty twenty items, it does specifically spell out the terms of the insurance that are required.
Oh, no, I, I see that, I just.
They add a section if you'd like us to just take that language and, and make it a specific requirement within the lease. We could add it as an item, it's not a problem.
Yeah, because I, you know, I have a little background in real estate, never went for the license. But I mean, it's, it's not in the lease as you see it here. It's, it's discussed after the signature page, which, you know what, it's an afterthought, in my opinion. I know it's not, I'm just saying it needs to be in the body of the agreement.
We can add those terms as item twenty-seven within the leasing terms if that would make, make it clearer to, to the board. And then, and hopefully then it eliminates that concern of having to go to Exhibit A to find the requirement. We can just add it as insurance.
I amend your motion to state it, reflect that.
Which is our typical requirement.
Let me finish with the article. On number nine, Gary, it's mentioning during the lease option period, the buyer, and it goes on to say the buyer and the seller buyer, but doesn't say anything about the lessy. I wonder if needs to, the word lessy needs to be put in there, say the buyer slash lessy. Because you're talking about a lease option period, you're not the buyer until everything comes to fruition. It's technicality, but I don't know, even though it's required at that point.
This is same lease for the Historical Society, like literally?
Yes, it is. I, I think this was put together by Ray Masuko for Chip Sterns and the Historical Society, Kathy Bergman maybe?
If I recall at the time, and I may be wrong, but I thought it was reviewed by our, the town attorney who was on the board there at the time, but it wasn't created by us.
You, you're probably right. I'm speculating based on, based on what I saw from the agreement, the signed agreement that's recorded with the town and how I thought that happened.
Well, the thing is, it's the lease with the option to purchase. Back, I think, if I remember correctly, Bonnie Barnett was the chairman of the board at the time. We entered into, I believe, a two-year agreement. I believe Chip Sterns may have been the municipal manager at the time. But it states, and one of these things that I read on that agreement, or lease option to purchase. Oh, where is it here if I can find it? Paul McGinley, and we know that goes back some years. I know that's maybe a little history standpoint there, but I'd probably feel more confident about it if we had a, a current review by the town attorney. Also with the verbiage that I've discussed that referenced that insurance there from Exhibit A.
Sure, probably a good idea to have the town attorney look at it and make any language adjustments that the Select Board feels is appropriate and send it back to Dave Bonta. I'm sure that, that's a pretty standard process and would be fine with them.
Number twelve, Gary, I'm, I'm just thinking, usually there's a time, time element that kicks in with the lease option maybe exercised, you know, like within thirty days or sixty days. There's nothing listed there on that that doesn't say, except for there's something, no more than three calendar days after the date of the fax transmission. And same goes for eighteen, the buyer may terminate this lease option any time prior to the expiration of the option period. But it doesn't say how many days notice you have to give of your intent to terminate the.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I would just say that I thought it was covered by number twenty-five that said the lease terms in this agreement. If the, if the parties fail to material comply with the timeline in Exhibit A, that the, the lease terms could be revisited, meaning it, it would be in default. The, the parties could agree that it's in default or terminated. But again, so check with the town lawyer. I mean, I, that was my assumptions, but I'm, I'm not an attorney. I thought twenty-five covered it where it, it listed the time period for the options to be exercised in the timeline.
Yeah, that, that might cover it, Gary, but I'm, I, I was just saying, didn't see it anywhere else.
Yeah, no, good idea, yep. I don't know, I thought it was Ray Masuko, but Stefan says that it was not, that.
Do you have more, Peter?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm just saying, I don't recollect that at the time when I was here. And I think Sue was here at the same time, I may be wrong. But my recollection was that it came already to us in this form.
Yeah, from, from Ray Masuko. But, but.
It's irrelevant.
Right, irrelevant.
Do you have more, Peter?
I think the, the town, I think we should have due diligence from the town's attorney. We, we definitely want, don't want to put the town at risk for anything that's not, that's not reasonable. And that makes sense and I don't, I'm, I'm sure that S V G and Dave Bonta President would be, would say the same.
I mean, I don't have a problem with an agreement. I just want to make sure that the town's interests are.
Yes, me too.
Yeah. Actually, I know, I like the idea.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. And now we want to send this to the town attorney for review.
Do you want to, do you want to just change the wording to say, on the motion, to just say the pending review by the, by an attorney?
Sounds like a good amendment.
That way it gets this thing kicked down the road. And if there's no court problems from the attorney end of it, it's, it's, you're in, you're on your way.
And just add the language for the insurance as an item, just add it as item twenty-seven.
Yeah, just the certificate of insurance to be added in there.
Clear to everybody, so we're not searching an appendix.
Yeah, somebody, I don't think it has to be part of the motion because we've just approved him the lease, but just make sure those.
Form and then if there's modifications that are not substantive, we'll allow those. If it's substantive, we'll bring it back to the town for additional consideration.
Sounds good.
So you amended your motion to add pending attorney review or?
Yeah, right.
Second that? Amended motion, pending attorney review for the S V G lease. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you for your time, attention and diligence, appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Are you leaving, Gary?
Uh, no.
You're going to be here?
Yes, did you have some other things?
I did, but I'll ask him in other business if you're going to be around.
Okay.
But if you need to leave, just let me know. I don't want to make you stay here. Okay, next, finance.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm still here. So, um, year-to-date financials, I'm sorry, given the holiday week and how short it was, I got these to you guys late. There is nothing that sticks out to me in any of the financials. I still see a pretty substantial savings in the general fund and highway as far as the staff cuts that were made last year and are being carried through for this year. And we still see revenue to be on track. In fact, tax collections have gone extremely well for this tax cycle as well. So, um, given I gave it to you so late, you may not have questions this evening or, or maybe you do. But I can make myself available via phone or in person or email to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions right now?
Just a couple, like Shannon, when you look at this thing, the print, I know it's, it's a result of the computer program we got with Nemrick, et cetera. But you can never seem to, at least as I can anyway, figure out where we are with taxes that have been paid versus what we budgeted. It, it, I think it's showing the projection of two point eight million dollars versus two nine. If you look on page one of eighteen on your general fund report on the revenue taxes, it shows two million, two eighty-six, nine, twelve. And it shows actual of two, two, five, four, one, nine, four. But it's the second period, you know, you're pretty well sure that we haven't collected two million dollars worth of taxes after two periods. So I, I don't know if there's a way we can get, even if it's just a separate sheet that shows where, where we stand far as taxes go.
Sure.
How much we've collected versus what, you know, what we've got on the budget, because that kind of doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, so how Nemrick works is we post essentially for a hundred percent of the taxes that we've received minus some of the delayed state payments. So the rest of the state payments that come in will be applied to the general fund here. But so Nemrick does, in fact, just like you're stating, it shows us collecting a hundred percent of the taxes upfront. What I can tell you is that we are a little, for this tax collection period, which would be one quarter of the two point two million, we are right now at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in delinquencies. So we're still actively working to make arrangements for those. But that is all that's outstanding for this quarterly installment.
Okay. The other thing on the balance sheet, page one of three on that one, that is showing delinquent tax receivable of almost three hundred thousand dollars. And then the minutes we approved, you mentioned that you didn't think we ought to do a tax sale because there was two hundred thousand dollars worth of delinquent taxes. And I'm just wondering.
Sure.
Hundred thousand, is that ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three also the penalties and interest on that delinquent taxes or is that other?
Nope, so the delinquent tax receivable is all combined, all years. And so we have, that's why at this point a tax sale, and, and a lot of this is actually, there's already agreements on it. So we wouldn't be able to send it to tax sale. So, so currently, as of eleven thirty, we have three hundred thousand dollars with all past years and the current quarter, the, the first two quarters of this fiscal year.
I was just thinking going forward that maybe we want to consider doing a tax sale here in not too distant future.
I'm not opposed to it. Right now is a difficult time for individuals and we are trying to work with them. And you actually have an extremely low delinquency rate. Less than two hundred thousand of this is from all previous years combined for the town. So a tax sale, regardless of how many accounts you send, costs about a hundred thousand dollars. And, and then during a pandemic, what we're threatening is for people to not have a place to live. So given how low our delinquency rate is and how hard people are working to maintain their agreements and work with us, I think now might just be a bad time.
Shannon, I have a question. Is the heady green still on the books or has that been taken off at this point?
That was taken off.
Okay, so that doesn't include, the three hundred thousand doesn't include that, okay.
Correct. So we had about two hundred thousand in previous years. And then we took off the heady green, which is what lowered the delinquency.
Okay, the last one, because the rest of them I'll take up with you guys. I'll email you when I get a chance to come in this rest of the weekend, rather than hang up the, the rest of the meeting here. But I noticed under highway, the overtime was at eleven percent and the differential payment, pay is at forty-six percent. What's driving the, that discrepancy there or the difference?
So we're cross-training employees and also we lost a lot of our senior highway individuals. And so some of the laborers, equipment operators are doing jobs as heavy equipment operators. And so they get a shift differential because their pay doesn't reflect it. The eleven percent for overtime is a hundred percent thanks to Andy. He has really worked out a schedule and worked out the ability to have these individuals here during the daytime hours and do what needs to be done. So the total highway personnel right now is at twenty-seven percent and we're at forty-one percent of our budget.
Yeah, that, that, I just noticed the percentage was different. It's connected to another situation I'd rather not discuss at this meeting because there's an executive session issue. So I'll take that up with you sometime this week.
Okay.
That's, I'm, I'm all set.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much, Shannon. Move right along to budget B if you want. Equipment capital.
So Scott is actually going to talk to the equipment, all capital, equipment capital, but other capital projects as well as the debt schedule.
Right, so there, there's a couple of pieces to our equipment capital that sort of are reflective of this year that'll then transition into next year. So I just wanted to touch on a couple of things and I'm sure that the board's aware, back in the fall, you guys did approve a grant for community facilities from the Department of Agriculture for the Rockingham Fire Department, right? So there were going to be three sources of funding for that. We're going to have grant funding, we're going to have actual volunteer contributions. And then we were going to have a contribution from the town. So it took a little while to get the paperwork together, but ultimately now that's all been processed. And I appreciate Gary's help getting all the pieces together. These grants always have multiple overlaps. We were working with Kevin this week. I think we're now finally at a point where we're proceeding with purchasing the items that were previously on that agenda list. So we're hopeful that we can get this all approved and bought and hopefully acquired in, in our hands here fairly quickly. If suppliers have inventory, that's obviously the biggest concern at this point is just where we are in the supply chain with some of these things. So that is in process and, and so that was good news. There's a second grant that we're processing as well. And this is a twenty twenty-one C L G grant. And, and the reason I'm just bringing this up, and this is something you guys do on a routine basis. But a portion of this grant for next year is specific to the Rockingham Meeting House. And what, what they're going to be looking at is going back and trying to identify original colors and elements of the original colors and then try to apply that for restoration. And as we've talked about, painting various sections and doing other restoration in the building, having this work done, having it. having it reviewed, and then ultimately then trying to find something that matches a historic preservation component, I think is something that would be beneficial to the long-term preservation of the meeting house. So that's in our grant application that's going out here, Gary, I think, this week. And then we're hoping to have that information back so that that can help us with the next phase of the meeting house. I think Sue had asked at a previous meeting where we stood on trying to complete some of the painting. And that should help guide us on some of those decisions as we do that next round of, you know, preservation and stewardship of the building. So I just wanted to bring that to the, to the select board's attention, just so that they understand, you know, as these things are progressing, that'll, that'll help us on those two specific areas. And grant funding has been very beneficial and helpful in both of those. On our equipment schedule for this year, currently, we talked at the last meeting, and the board had raised a concern about budget and where we are in terms of the impact on our taxpayers and whether or not this is a year to go out and look at acquisition as opposed to maybe looking at some alternatives. We have a very limited 2022 budget for new equipment. The only two items that are really of any significance, we have one pickup truck, which is past use for life, and it's past 10 years old, and it's about a $60,000 item. And then we have one of our plowing trucks, which is one of our six-wheel freight liners, which again, depending upon how we do this winter, we could hold off on replacement of that and see if we can at least hold that money in abeyance as we go forward and see if there's a possibility of maybe, if that machine can hold out, since it's not as past its useful life as the pickup truck, we might be able to save some of that money as we go forward. The next big purchase for us is a loader, and that's a $250,000 item, which comes in the following year. So I think we want to pay close attention to these two items and make sure that we can maintain these pieces of equipment. They're all vital to our snow operations and our year-round operations. But I think that we're going to try to pull back on that one item for sure, on the freight liner, and see if there's a way that potentially we could limp that along for another year, which would buy us some wiggle room in the equipment account, if that's, you know, again, as we go forward, I think that'll help us reduce that pressure on the taxpayer. The pickup truck, I think, is critical just because we use it year-round to move our men in, as well as for snowing and our snowplow operation. So that one, I think we would definitely recommend we go forward with, which is only a $60,000 item. I think the larger truck, I think, at this point, given the sensitivity to some of our issues about where we are with the pandemic and everybody's financial position, I think we can try to make do. And, you know, we'll all keep our fingers crossed that we don't have one of these brutal winters and we end up beating up the equipment. But at this point, I think we can try to at least do that to help accommodate even out some of our cash flow. And we'll leave that, again, as a opinion for the town as we finalize. If that's something you'd like us to do, then we'll look at how that impacts our numbers and see what that might do in terms of our tax rate and helping us get to the bottom line. So those are, those are the major equipment items that we wanted to talk about. There's really nothing else of significance in next year's budget that will be impacting us. Like I said, the loader is a little farther out. So that's sort of the 10,000-foot view on the equipment. Does anybody have any questions just on that in general? So we can jump real quickly to, I think, in your packet folded up and inserted somewhere in your, in your town financial statements, there was also a, our debt service schedule. And, um, again, we have, I guess, a good news situation in the respect of, I think, 2022 is sort of our highest, our last highest payment year in terms of our debt service. So if you look down under the 2022 column, and you go down to the bottom, and you notice that you have roughly nine, you know, long-term debt items, and what we can touch on, on some of those individually if you'd like. And the principal and interest on the majority of that, except for the theater, is 749. And you have another $102,000 in municipal bonds for the theater. So you have roughly, for next year, you'll have an $851,000 debt service payment. If you look at 2023, you'll notice that a lot of our long-term debt gets paid off, and that we see that number drop substantially to $462,000 in 2023. So there's a $389,000 change in our payment schedule. So I think that's the good news aspect of this. So some of these longer-term items end up, like I said, we're at the end of the payments for those. We did not add any additional debt on this current schedule because I think we're, again, want to see where we are in terms of our, our financial position, where we are in terms of where we can potentially look at, you know, where we might be able to add projects or larger capital items. But we certainly are not, at this point, advocating for anything for next year until we can get that last principal and interest payment secured. And then I think we'll start that conversation early as to how we want to address the 2023 and going forward. That's a substantial drop-off on your debt payments. And I think there's something that if we wanted to look at major investment at that point, that might be more appropriate to look at and be able to sort of level debt as we go forward from 2023. Couple of items that are just smaller items. If you look at number four, number five in the debt schedule, these are short-term notes that were done for equipment purchases. One is for fire truck. The other one is for the rescue engine. The way Shannon had broken out the payments she had backloaded in 2025 the debt, so that it's leveled debt for '22, roughly the first, you know, up through '24, and then '25 it has more of a large-scale payout. If it, if it makes some sense, and I think it does, we would like to sort of revise that schedule so that we look at the '23, '24, and '25 years and just smooth out that debt so it becomes more of a level payment each of those three years, so you don't have that large payment out in '25. And I think at that point, then you have a holistic look at what your obligations are. And then if you want to incur additional debt, I think then you have a full understanding of what that means in terms of what your current obligations are and where you are in that, you know, five-year window. So that was our recommendation on debt. I think, like we said, we were going to maintain the status quo. We're not, at this point, advocating for any additional, going out to market for any additional maturity or any additional bonds. And we'll certainly then, I think, spend a good portion of '22 and '23 discussing what your, what your thoughts are as we move forward and have a more of a level debt in a much, much lower number as well for the next three to five years. So that's sort of a good news position as soon as we complete, you know, the high payment year, which is obviously '22. Any questions on our debt? Any? So it's a conservative approach, and certainly if there are specific things you want us to take a look at, we would certainly be willing to modify the schedule and try to work in something if you think there's something that you would specifically like to address. But at this point, that seemed to be the most conservative approach for our debt schedule.
And Sue had worked on this with Wendy and I, so her input would be valued because she had discussed our debt schedule going forward. Sorry, Sue.
Yeah, no, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we thought, and I think that's what Scott was referring to, talking past. With that, when that major drop hits, we should maybe be considering putting funding into capital fund. And, and so that when we have these big projects, we don't necessarily have to go out to borrow, but we have that money. So I mean, I think what we really need is that, I agree with Scott, to have that discussion of looking at our debt schedule beyond this year, or this upcoming fiscal year, I should say, and making sure that there isn't these up-and-down hits on our, on our budget that is more stable.
Yeah, I think a sinking fund of some sort for large-scale capital makes a lot of sense. I agree with Sue. I think it also helps the taxpayers understand, you know, as we try not to have shocks, right? I think we're all trying to be, you know, as level as we can be and, you know, try to anticipate major expenditures. I think that's why it makes some sense for us to have that discussion in, you know, multiple meetings in '22 and develop that for '23 and beyond. And I think that that's something that's valuable to all of us. I think we can all get to a place where we're accomplishing, I think, you know, good fiscal management for the, for the town, and also the taxpayers feel that, you know, we're not neglecting the assets that we're entrusted to maintain. So I think it's a prudent path forward.
So might we see this, this debt updated? You were just speaking about items four and five being updated to look differently, and perhaps even look into 2026?
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is-
Stuff around, maybe we could see this again?
What we'll do is we'll, we'll come back and we'll, we'll, we'll take out the 2025 balloons, I guess, for lack of a better word, on items four and five. So that'll be more of a level debt. It'll change some of your, your bottom line, but not substantially.
It'll, but it would, it would reflect this current budget we'll be working on.
And then it'll reflect as we go forward to 20, right, it'll reflect that, that discussion as well.
But it wouldn't change FY '22 at all.
No, the payment in '22 will stay the same. The total of 851,478 will still be our debt service for 2022. The real issue, Gattano, is '23, where it drops substantially down to that 462,040. And then as we manage going forward, if we decide to create a sinking fund for large capital, or if we identify some other large capital, I think that's the way then we fund out through those additional years.
Well, it's good we're looking at it because between the debt service, between highway, general fund, and equipment, equates somewhere around 22 cents on the tax rate right now. That's, that's the thing. The other thing people don't take into consideration too is the school debt. That's, you got the middle school still out there. That's a 10-year bond on that one. And that's out there. It's timewise, so.
I think people are understanding more and more that that's where most of their tax dollars are going. Good. Okay.
So we'll do those minor revisions, bring this back to you, just as a discussion item, just so we can all take another look. And then we can look at some just baseline alternatives for establishing some sort of sinking fund going forward and seeing what that might look like, realizing that we have, you know, the substantial drop-off in payments as we approach '23, '24, and '25. So I think that's something we can, we can program, at least put it on a piece of paper. Everybody can see it. We can start that conversation.
Any other questions right now? Debt services, move on to highway?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, and again, Sue had brought up the question of our paving, our funding for paving, because there had been a discussion about what our annual paving contribution was. And I believe two years ago, roughly, it was about 350,000. And then there was a discussion about whether it was going to increase in $50,000 increments to go to a 400,000, and then potentially a $450,000 number over, over, you know, consecutive years. Two things I think that we, again, have to take into consideration. We do have some ability. We did not fund it at the $450,000 level in our initial budget proposals. We did fund it at the lower level. However, there are funds available, I believe, and Shannon, you can jump in, in the highway fund itself, if we wanted to up those budget numbers to reflect the 400 or $450,000 funding level.
Yeah, so what my recommendation would be is, given all of the savings that we had last year, and then our anticipated savings this year, would be to take money out of the highway general fund to maintain a flat tax rate for the residents, but continue, like Sue was saying, and increase the pavement budget because we should stay on track for the plan that we had. And that's a good way to do it with funds we've already raised for the highway department that we don't need in the general fund.
So Shannon, that would mean, at the town meeting, we would have to have a motion to move that out of, out of the general fund into the next year's highway fund, like we did in the past?
Correct. And I'm also advocating the same for the general fund, the town general fund, as well as the highway fund.
Yeah, because I did have a peek at the, the paving schedule. And for next year, construction season, it's at about 459. I mean, these are older numbers, of course, because-
Right, they were done-
Because asphalt's actually gone down in price and because of the, from when this was made. So we might even be able to, you know, that number might be lower. And those roads may have to be looked at again to make-
But yeah, and in addition, we have done a couple of the roads in advance of the schedule. But we are in communication with Everett, which is great because he's able to give us some insight into how to move forward with this. So Scott has already met with him.
Yeah, because it looks like it's mostly Saxon's River for next year.
Yeah, we have some holdovers from this year that I don't think we had finished, that will end up being done in the spring. And then I think we were going to go and revise this list. So I think we'll have a little more diversity. And again, we'll, we'll try to reflect, I think, more accurate pricing at that point, too. So I think the list might be a little longer in terms of the number of streets, but we'll try to keep it to that same, you know, that same base number, about 450 is really what we're shooting for, which would then mean, you know, a transfer of roughly $100,000 to reach that level.
Yeah, because I think we need to take advantage of the low asphalt prices. We don't know how long it's going to last.
Exactly.
I've never seen anybody upset when they pave their street. Everybody likes to see-
Cost of fuel drives those prices.
Yep.
Yeah, right now I think we're in a favorable environment. It would make sense, and I'm sure you would get public support to do that. I can anticipate people would be upset about that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What thought, I know Depot Street Bridge is on the horizon here. What thought have we, has any thought been given to setting aside some reserve funds to build up for that? I think we're due 175,000 or something. We got to put into it?
We're just now starting to discuss the plans for that, and there are some additional utility relocations and some other things that haven't been incorporated. So I think we'll get a better sense of that than just talking with the engineers. Probably we need another three to six months to get sort of that 40, 50% design. And at that point, then I think I'll be able to come back to you with better numbers. And then I think we'll probably end up with a schedule as well from, from when they think this thing will be let, when it'll actually be under construction, and we'll have a better handle on the entire project.
Yeah, I didn't know if there, I know at one point we discussed setting up some sort of reserve thing, so much a year to stick into it, a fund reserved for that purpose, so that when the time came to do it, we wouldn't have to go out and borrow the money.
Wasn't it? We agreed on a number, but it was pending what they found, right? Like we had, in the motion we passed was, you know, pending what they found on this, on Canal Street when they drilled, and we would be responsible for it. There was people that thought it wasn't going to be significant cleanup. So it wasn't, weren't we waiting for those tests, which would impact exactly how much it cost us, right?
Yeah, they haven't finished all that engineering, so I'm a little hesitant to jump in and give you guys numbers until I get that-
They were, I thought that's what they were drilling, when they were drilling the cores.
They've done some, they've done some boring, but there's also some additional engineering they need to do for utility- they need to do for utility relocation. And I'm not sure what-
That was separate from like a significant impact of one way or the other for the town.
The impact-
Was the, the-
Contamination.
Yeah.
Right. That would be the bigger number that would drive. And then I think-
We really don't know yet.
They haven't given me a really good handle on that. So I, I would be hesitant to, to put a number out there to say, let's reserve 150 or 250. I just don't have a good sense of that yet. So I'd, I'd mislead you at this point if I gave you something to shoot at.
Yeah, but I agree with Peter that we should at least put something in that budget line, even if it's 10,000, just something to start that process of people thinking that we're going to have to be paying some of this. At least get that balance up.
Right. There is a local share on that project.
Yeah, the local share, the local share I know, and looking at reviewing the paperwork, is about 175,000 based on that project that we, we accepted or adopted the replacement in place. And then they did say something about there could be additional funding of 100, 140 grand for cleanup on contamination. But in talking to-
But that wouldn't be in FY '22.
Covered most of that when she had a, she paid out 400,000 to clean up that area on that end of the bridge. So I, I find it kind of interesting that they may find something there. But anyway.
What'd you say, Shannon?
Oh, I was just saying that the majority of that probably would not be in our FY '22 budget.
But put some away, like Susan and Peter are saying. We're, we're all in favor of that, I think.
All right. If, if we look at some, maybe a placeholder number, we could potentially look at, you know, we have to make some changes to the, we had discussed earlier, we can look at maybe putting 50,000 as a placeholder. If you're comfortable with that, that would at least get you started.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking some-
And then we can see what that looks like as, you know, we pull the, the numbers together. And before we get to our final numbers, we'll, we'll highlight that for you as we go over this again.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
So 50 is the amount the board, the board suggesting for a placeholder?
Yeah.
Yes. And we'll look at the offset, Shannon, as we talked about with the, the equipment schedule as well.
Anything else right now? Anyone? Okay. So then we'll have, we have, we need to, our next meeting, that would be too soon.
14 days from today.
We, we need to review agenda items for our next meeting of the 15th of December.
Yep.
So can I recommend that we start bringing in staff to present their budgets?
I do, yeah. And, and depending on time and people's schedules, we could do-
Maybe three departments per meeting?
Yeah, or, or those Saturday ones or whatever, if people want to get to it here.
I know sometimes you can get sort of in a zombie mode. You get too much-
You get, it's about nine, nine o'clock. You're not into it.
People have started to think about-
Yes, department heads coming up with their budgets, Shannon.
Let me at least get three on the schedule for the 15th, and then we'll see how we want to go forward from there.
And the library is going to come on the 15th as well.
Okay, and the library.
Fantastic. That's it for now. Sure, something will come up? Do we have something else? And review agenda items for a joint board meeting, which is still on the 29th. I still have one, two, three, four items listed here. I don't know if I need to list them again?
Uh, no, I don't have anything new.
Something there and-
I have them. The automated cars, we need to discuss Gary's position-
Yep.
With the village, perhaps the dispensary agreement from years past, right? We wanted to discuss that.
The retail, the retail cannabis option? Is that, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
And town housing is what I wrote.
The rental and maintenance ordinance.
Yeah, that's the housing one, right.
That's housing.
So those four.
Those are the four I have as well.
Okay. Review and approve orders, bills and warrants?
So moved.
Seconded.
What's been made in second and review, review and approve orders, bills and warrants? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Passes. Other business, Susan?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Ben?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Stefan?
Um, just want to say thank you to everybody that helped out with the tree and light display here over the weekend, was down here for the tree lighting. And it attracted a fair amount of people. That was good. Square looks nice.
Second that.
Yeah, square looks great.
Amazing. Everyone involved, it's just unbelievable.
No adds to that. And we are done with Hyde Hill project for this year.
Understanding from talking with Andy was the final paving was done, I believe, Monday. And so we have not done a walkthrough or punch list yet with the contractor, but I believe all of the heavy work is done.
Okay. Cause I, I just thought we were going further down the road than where, where it ends. That's all. Just me. So.
I, so I was asked again this morning about the Hedy Green and what was going on. And in particular, was there permits pulled? And people keep asking me this question, and my understanding is, I'm not sure. So if someone has a straight answer on if permits have been pulled, I was asked that question again this morning. And question, just Gary's still here, it's kind of other business. It's probably what we've all read about Brattleboro's potential Amtrak project station coming up. And just wondered if we had any information to pass along to the folks at home or to the board. Last we knew, we were doing some, some, some discussion with perhaps selling the building and the two different people own was property in the building. And then, so where are we at with potential Amtrak? It seems like good news, I think, for some of us to, to find out that they're putting in that kind of money right down the road for, for a rail that comes right through our, our town here.
Yeah. So the, the current five year rail plan has six goals. And one of them is to, to make improvements to the passenger rail stations in Vermont. For, for our station here in Bellas Falls, we have about, not about, we're, we're right in the middle of the ridership. So out of the nine stations in Vermont, we have more ridership than four of them and less ridership than four of them. Brattleboro is, I think, either number one or two. And their, their, the project for the Brattleboro station has been on the, the books for years and years. There's been challenges with it. They've been working through and it, it's a great project. It's really needed there. For the Bellas Falls station, we have some challenges here. The, the, the challenge that stopped us from being able to redevelop the station in 2003, four and five was the ownership. A town meeting this past year, the, the town designated $12,500 towards feasibility study to start that process of, you know, what can we do to develop the train station? During the interim, in the summer, we applied for a USDA rural development grant, which those first funds leveraged. And we now have a $25,000 to start that first study, along with the Wyndham Regional Brownfields Program to start with the phase one, which would have to take place before any purchase in order to protect the town from any environmental liability. The, the feasibility study will look at the station for a public private partnership and identify structurally what is the, you know, maybe 20% of the station that needs to be in, in play for Amtrak for the, you know, the 34, 30 to 40 people that are waiting there at, at peak. And, and a private operator to help with expenses and development for the other 80% of the station. And additionally, come up with a, a rough estimate of, of what it will cost. The, the holdup in that project for us is that the, the envi, so the, the railroad, Green Mountain Railroad owns the building for the passenger station. The state of Vermont Rail Division owns the ground under it. For environmental work, we really only need to look at the station structure itself and the ground in the basement and around the platform of the station. For, for the state, excuse me, whose property it is, that whole eight, it's about, I think about eight acres, 8.8 acres, that whole parcel on the northern end of the island is part of that state rail property. Once, once you do an environmental assessment and you discover the contamination, you can't just say, well, we're drawing a wall right here where the property that, that the town needs to be assessed is done. And any contamination right next to it, we're going to ignore. So they need to, yeah, so they need to assess- Yes. So once it's identified, it needs to be cleaned up. And, and so it's going to look at that whole 8.8 acre process. So the state is not eligible for federal grants for cleanup. So for that whole parcel, we know the, the rail properties are, there's a 99.9% chance this contamination there, going back as far as 1849. And the state is very interested in cleaning up these properties. They don't, they don't try to avoid it. But what, why it's taking time is they need to go through their planning process and know that they'll have the funds available since they can't get grants to do the cleanup. And so right now we're waiting for sign off from the Division of Policy and Planning on the, the site control for the phase one. And then we go to the Regional Planning Commission to do that phase one. And we will be in January issuing an RFP to start that feasibility study with the $25,000 we have set aside to do the, the cost and structural estimates for that. Is that, is that helpful?
Sure, very much.
Okay, great.
Very, very detailed answer.
I made, I was, I had some people today, we just happened to talk about railroads. And there was some discussion, Gary, about maybe some affiliation with Gulf Transportation, I'm not sure, but Pan Am Railways is to be acquired or recently was acquired by CSX, who was looking to move into the Northeast through here. So I, you were kind of saying that? For rail traffic coming through the Vermont?
Sure. So the, the railroads are notorious for buying up different railroads and operating rights and, and selling rights. And Pan Am Railroad, they used to come to a siding at CNS. They, they had trouble coming into Vermont for about 30 years. They were in front of the, the FRA, the Federal Rail Administration, you know, that the rail version of the FTA and fighting to get that operating rights to go on the tracks through Vermont. And they eventually, after 30 years, they, they won those rights because they had to trace through the kind of mergers and acquisitions you're talking about. They had to trace through tens and tens of different of those purchases between different railroads to identify that Pan Am owned a piece of track in White River Junction, which by law gave them the right to operate into Vermont because they have to be able to get to their rail property in White River. So about three years ago, they started operating again through here. You can see their trains through here every night around nine o'clock. They're parked at Depot Street, changing out engineers, and their train heads north. They do use the Green Mountain Railroad rail yard to do their swaps, store cars, drop and, and move around their freight. Yeah, I don't know. It's par for the course, I would say that merger. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. That'll do it. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.